Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located outside on the table as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the chamber. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 12, 2023, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 26, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Please move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. D, E, F. There is no need for executive session, and so the motion could include adjournment?
I move for approval and also to review.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, August 22, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have for you our report for the month of August. Following enclosure number one, Administrative Services, following the second month of the fiscal year, we are $785,850 under budget. There was $428,402 spent on overtime in August. That is an increase of about $70,000 from the previous month. And there were over $900,000 in bond payments which were processed. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 22 individuals in community corrections, saving the jail 112 bed days. Work release admitted 30 individuals. House arrest admitted 48. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 34 individuals. 93 individuals were admitted to the various therapeutic community housing units in the jail. I know I sound like a broken record, but we are still working with the vendor and dot com on full integration for pretrial release data. And I'll just tell you, that has been escalated, that process, due to the length of time that it's taking. There were 258 individuals placed on pretrial release. There were 1,162 individuals that were supervised over the course of the month in total on pretrial release. 470 individuals participated in 24/7 sobriety, and 154 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors, theoretically saving 3,655 jail bed days. There is additional data, new reports regarding our programs and outcomes from those programs in enclosure two, and I encourage you to take a look at those. Enclosure number three, Compliance. We are preparing for our upcoming American Correctional Association audit. We have 634 standards between the jail and community corrections that we will be held accountable for. Our audit is scheduled from the week of October 30th, and it will run the balance of that week through November 3rd. Our accreditation will take place officially at the ACA Winter Conference in Washington, DC next January. And as of the date that I typed this, about 90% of all of our standard work has been done to document that we are in compliance and ready for audit. So we're coming down the very homestretch. Enclosure number four, Personnel. We did have a little bit of a rough month personnel-wise. I want to dwell on the positive first. We had two officers who retired, and I wanted to wish them well and congratulate them on their retirement. Both of these people I knew well and served Douglas County in an honorable manner. Officers Juan Hermanandez and Ronald Black both retired in August. Unfortunately, we did have a higher-than-normal number of personnel matters, which resulted in several involuntary separations, and we did have a total of 13 officers, including the two retirements that left employment during August. We had 15 officers, however, who graduated the Training Academy on September 1st. As of July 31st, we were 97% staffed. I'm sorry, I should have said August. As of August 31st, we were 97% staffed among the correctional officer ranks. Christopher Crozell has celebrated his 20-year anniversary of service to the Douglas County Department of Corrections, and I want to congratulate Stacy Johnson and Song Quinetta Neal, who were both promoted to the rank of Sergeant in August. And we are anticipating a class of more than 30 officers, which will be our final Training Academy of the year, which will begin next week. Enclosure number five, Population. There are 1,349 admissions. That's an increase of 51 over the previous month. There are 1,324 releases. Our high count was 1,174, and our low count was 1,113. Our average daily population did take a jump, up 51 to 1,141, which is not uncommon as we get to the end of the summer months. It tends to be our cycle. There were 72 custodial sanctioned bed days. That is a decrease. The US Marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population remains stable. Probation violations increased. Pardon me. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 68% of our population were minorities. Unfortunately, that is up 1% from the previous month and up a couple of percent from where we were earlier in the summer. 15% of our population were female, an increase of 2%, and 17% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, Medical. We had 1,091 intake screenings, and there were 372 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergent medical care. Eight of those were by 911. There were six hospitalizations, which resulted in 56 days of hospitalization. And Commissioners, you've heard me say this before. Those are, that's basically like adding 56 housing unit days to the jail because we have to provide supervision of that individual, depending on their custody level and their charges and their medical condition, sometimes with more than one officer at a time at the hospital round the clock. And that probably drove our increase in overtime this month. And there were 46 off-site specialty medical appointments. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 131 initial psychiatric assessments and 238 initial mental health assessments. There were 125 mental health infirmary placements, which are primarily suicide precautions. 187 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were 14 Board of Mental Health referrals and two transfers to the Lincoln Regional Center. And 43% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness, and that seems to be a pretty stable number over the past few months. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our crisis negotiation team had eight deployments, three of which were joint deployments with our CERT team. Issues included attendance for court, compliance with showering, attendance of medical appointments both for inside and outside of the facility, cell extractions, and retrieval of a broken cane that could have been used as a weapon from an agitated individual. Our Corrections Emergency Response Team, or CERT, four new CERT members attended the CERT Academy training that was provided by the Nebraska Department of Correctional Services. CERT was deployed three times, all of which, I described above, were in conjunction with the crisis negotiation team. 10 searches of housing units were conducted, contraband recovered, included modified items for tattooing, modified items to create a spark, and suspected K-2, which was submitted for testing. And our Honor Guard, at the request of Mills County, Iowa, provided services for Chief Deputy Bruce Paulson. Enclosure number nine, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. 45 individuals interviewed for correctional officer positions, and 56 applications were received. Recertification for PPCT, which is our defensive tactics, continued for all correctional officers throughout August. Nine staff members utilized the wellness and retention office for the first time, and additional 20 staff members received ongoing services. 46 staff members were referred to the peer support team, and 27 follow-ups were completed. Commissioners, since we've really made this a focus, it has been very eye-opening how great the need has been. The amount of individuals who have either been referred or self-referred to services and getting connected to either our own internal resources or to the First Responders Foundation for outside mental health therapy has been more substantial than I would have guessed. So we were definitely filling a need there that we always knew was there, but I think is more significant than we even perceived. Three staff members were referred to external mental health resources. Yoga for first responder classes will continue to be offered weekly, and use of the Peer Support app increased from the previous month. The peer support team did something pretty neat in August. They organized for all, reached out to all, you know, public safety agencies and organized workouts at local gyms for all public safety agencies on August 23rd. August 23rd is the one-year anniversary of the loss of one of our officers to suicide. That officer, and I'm not going to say his name intentionally, he was an avid fitness... He, you know, he was trying to find the right word. He just was very conscientious of his fitness and his physical health, and so they did a citywide workout in his honor one year after his death. Other noteworthy items. Work on our facility-wide safety project continues. When concluded, all housing units with a top tier will have safety netting installed, and top bunks are being replaced. We are currently at a critical juncture in this project. Remember, a couple of few months ago, I told you about our infirmaries being displaced. We have now displaced our highest security unit to do these enhancements in that unit. So this is going to force us to use other units that don't have all of the infrastructure in place that our maximum security unit has. We are compensating with additional staffing resources and other special attention during this approximate one-month period, and we're going to push the contractors to get this done as quickly as possible so that we can get them back into that unit where we have the infrastructure to manage them more safely. And I do, before I get to the last item, we have already seen dividends paid from this project. We have had two incidences, maybe actually three so far, where the netting has prevented somebody from attempting to self-harm from the top tier. And we had somebody who attempted to do a ligature, but they had nowhere to tie it to because the bunk had been replaced. And so there's no such thing as a suicide-proof facility, but we have multiple examples already where these enhancements have seemed to have showed that they've been effective in preventing self-harm. Lastly, musical artist Jelly Roll visited our Community Corrections programs, and he, along with other members of his band, battled the long history of addiction and incarceration. He spent well over an hour with our clients of Community Corrections, sharing his story and singing a few of his popular songs. This was a very moving moment for many of our clients. Many were tearful and grateful to hear his testimony and for the sharing of his time. I want to give a special shout-out to the GED instructor in Community Corrections, Karen Shelton, who arranged for this visit, and to our Community Corrections staff members who helped make this special occasion happen in a safe and orderly manner. With that, I am ready for your questions.
Any questions for Mike? I just have two on the first page where you talk about the saved and combined bed days for both the Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center, and then the pretrial services saving bed days. If we could add what that dollar amount equates to?
Oh, you asked me that last month.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
Mike, thank you. Just a quick question. I know the overtime, it had been going down with the additional officers that have been on staff. What changed it this month a little bit?
Well, we are continuing to do, we had, there'd been some trainings that we had, we'd delayed to try and get more staff present so that we could basically afford to pull people off of their regular shift to do training. That couldn't be, that's been going on over the course of the summer. We did, as I said, had a disappointing month retention-wise due to a variety of issues. That didn't help either. You know, there were 13 people who either retired or left employment. That, you know, those are, you know, all those shifts had to be filled with overtime. And, you know, the, I had another thought related to like the renovations and the being at, we are, where we're at with that project. We've allocated an additional staff member to be present in the unit where we've moved these individuals who were in our highest security unit to compensate for the change in the physical infrastructure in that building or in that housing unit. And, you know, that will go on for another few weeks, so September may not really be much different or an improvement either, but I would anticipate we'll continue. You know, Commissioners, we were over $1 million a month several months ago, so it has improved dramatically.
Yes.
But this was a little step backwards, which there is always going to be from time to time.
And I know that you worked that hard for us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other lights? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there other comments on the Corrections agenda?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you, Mike, but I do have a question that maybe you can clarify for the citizenry. There is a mention in the Board of Corrections, part of the agenda about national accreditation, and you've heard me talk about these things before, but when we pay dues and we go to meetings and we subscribe to accreditation by people that are outside of this county or outside of this state or outside of this city, are we in jeopardy of possibly losing any funding because we don't kowtow to their rules, regulations, policies, and procedures, resolutions, and proclamations, and training? If so, I think we need to back off on some of that. The concept of federalism under our Constitution separates what's not written in the Constitution and gives it to the power of the states. That doesn't mean that we go back and join federal or national organizations to run our state, our corrections. If I, it might sound silly to you guys, but it's a discussion that probably ought to be held if we honor the Constitution, which, by the way, Sunday was Constitution Day. Thank you, but maybe Mike can clear up just how much responsibility we have to follow their... Thanks. Thank you.
Commissioners, Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. The American Correctional Association is not a governmental body. It is a professional association which produces standards which are reviewed every six months and updated according to changes that are occurring throughout the country. Whether those be legal changes, just, you know, it could be anything from, you know, the rise of fentanyl is going to change how we do business. On a practical matter, we have a unique situation in Nebraska where being ACA accredited actually saves us money because if we weren't, we would be approved through Nebraska jail standards, and the ACA accreditation process provides more methods and more ways to demonstrate that you're protecting people's rights and maintaining the standards than what Nebraska jail standards does. And there's some physical plant issues in our jail that we would, that we overcome by being flexible and following the ACA standards. And, you know, it is, we have been accredited since, I think, 2005, I think, somewhere around there. It was shortly before I started my career at Corrections, the jail became accredited. But it is something we do voluntarily. It's good to have, it is a much more thorough review of what we do on a day-in, day-out basis than what we would get from jail standards. The week-long visit, you know, where they're present on a team of people, all three shifts, is a much more thorough look to make sure that we are adhering to the standards to keep our staff safe, to keep the people who are incarcerated safe, and to make sure that their rights are protected.
With that, any other questions or comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jaquila Yarborough, 2417 Burdette Street. Just a few questions I had to follow up with the pretrial release data. Just scrolling through the report, and I cannot consistently find, even on the internet. I was wondering, are there any data sets available, anything that we keep specifically tracking, the race and ethnic demographics of the individuals who are being granted pretrial release? Is there a central board that decides who gets pretrial release, who does not? And is there a way for us to take a look at at least that data for the past three to five years so we can get an idea of the trend? Because I hear that there is essentially progress being made to make sure that there's a more equitable process being instated. That's just not necessarily been made, public data. So essentially, those are my questions. As I hear it alluded to, it sounds like, forgive me if I'm not pronouncing this right, but it sounds like NIACOM had some type of data on pretrial release. I was wondering if there was a tentative date that the public could expect that data to be available? And also, I'm interested in what framework are we as a county using to create a more equitable condition when it comes to pretrial release? So that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Commissioners, that data, at least the racial breakdown of pretrial release, is included in your report. A, the, we have the number of individuals released by supervision level, the number of individuals released by race. It is on page 19 of your report. I'm going to start needing glasses pretty soon. It about typically, so we've been at this, you know, we did pretrial, we did pretrial just under a year ago. We launched, it was right at the end of September of last year. We have data in your report from January forward, and it appears that it's consistently around 42% to 43%, 44% being the highest, of people on pretrial release who were Caucasian. So that would mean that about 60, or the high 50, 56% to 58% are minorities who are being placed on pretrial release. The data that she was referencing, I'm not familiar with that.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we do not have a need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 12, 2023, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, September 19, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Any questions or comments? Roll call. Oh, sorry.
You're fine. Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please. Okay. A minus B. Oh, sorry, D, not B. All right, so the consent is A through K minus D. Is there a motion to, or is the maker in the second okay with that?
Yes.
Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioners Rogers and Morgan. Motion passes six to zero.
Next is item D. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Questions or comments? Please, go ahead.
Little hard time with the sound system again today. I wasn't sure whether you skipped over this or not on the vote, closing it to comments. Some of the wording on this is curious.
Larry, you got to identify yourself.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you, Mike, but I do Oh, Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Here again, we have nice words, bridge, nonprofits, early intervention systems, Stephen. You know, that implies that you're intervening before somebody gets in trouble. I guess you're talking about youthful offenders. But how would that be possible? It must mean after they've been detained, released, and asked to come back for a meeting, something like that. All, all fine and good. But the transparency of it is what I'm talking about. And nonprofits, you know, the other day on the national news, oh my God, people were screaming and hollering because nonprofit funding for daycare has gone away. And I think I've said something about those things in the past, that what are you gonna do when the money dries up? Made the national news. When the money dries up or the feds pull the money that through their grants, we're not gonna renew the grant again or whatever, or clawback, what are you gonna do when the money drunk dry?
No other lights? Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we have a resolution honoring the life of Omaha attorney and lobbyist Mike Kelly upon his recent, recent passing. And so Sean, if you wanna come forward, we'll go ahead and read the resolution. Good morning. Whereas Mike Kelly, an Omaha attorney and lobbyist, passed away on Friday, September eighth, twenty twenty-three, at the age of seventy-six. And whereas Mike Kelly was a graduate of Omaha Creighton Prep, Creighton University, and Creighton Law School. And whereas while at Creighton University, Mike Kelly played on the varsity golf team and remained an avid golfer throughout his life. And whereas after law school, Mike Kelly engaged in the private practice of law with his father, the late Thomas P. Kelly. And whereas in nineteen eighty-one, Mike Kelly was appointed to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and was subsequently elected to a second term in nineteen eighty-four. And whereas after completing his term on the Douglas County Board, Mike Kelly's law practice centered on government relations and lobbying, primarily before the Nebraska Unicameral and the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. And whereas Mike Kelly served as Douglas County's primary lobbyist for many years before being succeeded in that capacity by his son Sean Kelly. And whereas Mike Kelly founded Clancy's Pub with his father and was owned, and also owned the original Zestos across from Rosenblatt Stadium and the current Zestos and Platt Beer and Table, both located next to the Charles Schwab Field. And whereas.
Mike was an avid fan of his beloved Creighton Blue Jays and Chicago Cubs. And whereas Mike Kelly, through his service to both Douglas County Government and to the Omaha community, has left a lasting legacy, and he will be sorely missed. Now therefore being resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby expresses its sincerest condolences to the family of Mike Kelly upon his recent passing. I will move approve.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to add a personal note, Sean, to you and your family. Your dad and I were good friends, as you know, and families have been friends for generations. And he was a good and decent man and did a great job as a public servant. But to me, he was, he was a pal and a mentor. And I always enjoyed his company and his advice was priceless. Deep condolences to you and your mom and your brothers. But his legacy lives on in you. And I'm, I, I know that he was very, very proud of you and, and what you do in public service. And inspired by him and his father, I'm sure that you'll carry on that proud tradition in our city and county and state. So.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thanks.
Commissioner Rogers.
Sean, I don't know how much more can I add? We've, you know, I'd say your, your dad was a giant. He was a giant. I mean, he was one of the few people that I still knew living that could walk into any politician's office and be received with joy. And like, like Commissioner Kavanaugh said, he got it honest from his father, from what I'm told, and you got it honest from him. And I'm sure that tradition will carry.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan.
Pleasure when he'd come down to the board and make a presentation in recent months. And he just had so much class and respect for all people. And he will be missed. He's just really a great guy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Sean, when I, when I first got to the legislature, I don't remember when, I was on the General Affairs Committee. And a, a couple of, a, a couple of legislative aides, we were working through an issue, a, a, a tough one. And the aide goes, well, you need to call Mike Kelly. And I go, who's Mike Kelly? I mean, I, I was new, I didn't even know where the bathrooms were. So I go, who's Mike Kelly? And they go, the guy, the guy looked at me and he goes, never mind, I'll, I'll take care of it. I mean, this guy's hopeless. He, he was referring to me. I did get a chance to meet Mike then, and I worked with him, and I'll miss him. So, thanks, Sean.
And I just want to add that, you know, Mike took a, a chance on a young, unknown, never been involved in politics, and he became my mentor. We had an excellent professional relationship when it came to lobbying. But most of all, we garnered a friendship over the years. And I see so much of your dad in you, Sean, that he will definitely live on through you. And I just can't tell you how much I'm gonna miss him, but thanks for being here today. And we do, we love him a lot.
Yeah, well, on behalf of the entire family, thank you so much, the board and everybody at the county, whether it's staff or, or row officers, he had a deep affinity for, for county government. Appreciates all you do.
Absolutely. With that, please vote. Just come around.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. With that, citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Yesterday was the anniversary of the signing and reading of the United States Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land. Anything not in that is reserved to the states and local government. I'd like to take an opportunity, because it was today, to bring up a discussion that does need to be held in Omaha across the nation. And that is regarding the Muslim community. I follow Dr. Mark Christian, and I do believe, as he does, and other people that write about it, that Muslims are a victims of a political system. There was, there was no race of Muslims before Muhammad. And Muhammad took over, got the power through murder and mayhem. And he, and his followers over the years, promulgated a lot of practices under Islamic, not Muslim, Islamic. Be clear about that, there's a difference. They're antithetical to our constitution and our culture. But a lot of people seem to think we need to welcome them with open arms. There was a program on KFAB yesterday that opened the discussion. So it's not just me about Muslims in Omaha and the freedom of speech, freedom of religion. The fact is, it is not a true religion, it's a political system. So we hope that that conversation is open for round robin discussions. Dr. Mark Christian is a converted Muslim. And he does preach peace, but it's very difficult to open conversations with the Muslim community because they're very private. The record for. The statements that I made. It's not just his words either, that's national words. The other thing is, we had a gentleman a couple of times that stood up and interrupted the proceedings with point of order, point of privilege. Well, if you do the research, Roberts Rules of Order and parliamentary law, that procedure is for people like yourselves that are members of this committee, not for people in the audience to stand up and interrupt and declare that they were teachers and they taught you and they taught the state legislature. If he does that again, I think you should call him to task on that. I, I did some research, here's some copy. Finally. I was gonna say I did skip over something. This is an email I sent out in regards to the Muslim thing and the discussion on the radio yesterday.
Larry, I'm, I'm actually gonna cut you off right now. And good, because that was nothing but pure racism.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That is not pure rhetoric and mine only. That is true.
You're not gonna be able or allowed to come to the podium again and talk like that. So thank you.
Hi, so I'm Maureen Boyle, the citizen, not Maureen Boyle, the commissioner. And I am just here to just call out that blatant racism and hate speech. I just want to make sure that people know, the citizens know, that the county commissioners cannot respond to items as commissioners when we are sitting there listening to, to things like this. And I refuse to sit down and accept it. So as a citizen, I am saying that I refuse to be complicit in, in these items that have to do with such blatant racism. And I'm, I'm calling my, my, my neighbor out.
No, Larry, sit down.
Calling my neighbor out. So.
Sit down, Larry.
So I'm calling my neighbor out. There is no, there is nothing to say, I mean, this, this country was built on, on religious freedom and ethnic diversity. So I think we need to be tolerant of that. And anything short of that is, is, is unacceptable in this country. So as a citizen, I'm come out and saying that. Now I'm gonna take my seat as the commissioner. Thank you.
And then just, just so again, Larry understands that you, you will not be allowed to make comments such as those ever again at this, at this podium. All right, so with that, we'll move on to committee reports. The first is the Finance Committee, the budget report as presented. We'll move to Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for litigation and legal advice. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Please vote.
Chairboards. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you everybody. Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at ten fifteen AM.